We're getting started. All right, let's call the meeting. Let the record be noted. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from May tenth twenty twenty. Does anyone have any changes, corrections those minutes?
Or made that?
I made that.
I get two copies of that.
What?
Oh, make that.
Also, could you get May twenty four?
Yeah, I got May twenty fourth, but I guess maybe that's a woman. A lot of mine is missing one.
I'm sure you got it.
Said you were here, Steve, for the tenth.
You're.
For the um. Twenty four.
I have a change, I don't know if it's really relevant, on sixteen sixty one, it's regarding uh Roland Matheson.
Wait, which 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 how much some uh may. Okay, I have some online.
He actually sixty one, sixty sixty one. It's just he wasn't a former secretary, he was just a member of the board.
Oh, okay.
And it's not a resort, it's just an HOA. It's minimum.
But cool, it falls and the family's or former secretary.
Yeah, yeah. It's he was just a member of the board and it's again not a resort.
Well, I think I I had something in my contact list about him.
And then there's another one on the I I just chose the two twenty two. It's. It's Mary's watch and wags.
Yeah. I'm with that. Two twenty two.
That's all the way.
Does anyone have anything else?
And down the line, on line.
Not very nice, huh?
On line one sixty two. Is the whole agenda either regarding with. New lots of the solid fee.
Wait, 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 one three one?
Line one sixty two.
One sixty two on twenty four? Or are we still on ten?
May ten.
Oh, okay, okay.
Hold on, one sixty.
One sixty, right?
Again, I just showed that line, you can see the end of that whole page and a half, almost two pages of. Uh the notice regarding that, but it never said it was actually was taken at this week. You know, line one fifty seven and eight, it says that that was continued to. May ten. Now on May tenth, what did we do?
Right, we we didn't, it says we discussed the memo about the application we got in completeness, which. I don't know the. I think we just continued it and that was the end of the story.
Wait, that's right.
Yeah.
But did we? But the in the most the. The hearing was continued to May ten, didn't we continue it to another further date? We didn't. We didn't continue the hearing and we didn't hold the hearing. I think we have a problem, Kirk, but I thought we continued it to a further date, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we did.
We they they requested that we did, right?
Yeah.
It just doesn't say it in here, and I just sent it to her.
Can you see why, only see what my agenda says because I put what it is to be doing.
Well, it's it's on the agenda for tonight.
It was continued to June fourteenth.
Okay. Then let's we add that at the end of line one sixty two, this. This agenda item was continued. By unanimous vote to June. Fourteenth.
I think I have to change one fifty eight. Say June fourteen.
No, the April twelfth public hearing.
Uh, that's right, yeah. April tenth, April twelfth is to May tenth and May tenth.
Ten was to to June fourteen, and what's tonight, that would be? Two fourteen, we're gonna continue it to two twenty eight.
Maybe.
Oh, oh, I mean.
We haven't done that yet.
We haven't done it yet. So you can't say we will, I'm being asked to.
And then one sixty nine, one seventy, Mary's. Walk and wags.
Thank you, I knew it.
Mary's legs and wags.
And two forty seven. employee housing was considered. A residential use. And say as multi-family home, we just considered it residential use, which required fifteen thousand square feet per unit. So I would take out as multi-family homes and and then just put have to consider for a residential use.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else? So I'm hoping to approve the minutes with changes. So move your second.
But.
Call in favor.
I.
Anyone saying, anyone opposed, right, Kelly's. Consideration of meeting minutes from May twenty fourth twenty twenty three.
Let me adjust it. If you don't want to. Mary can be first on the agenda.
Yeah.
Where you.
Let's just to the minutes, let's get going, yeah.
The thing for this, got what line, line two seventy eight. Um but any word reason the questions posed by selectman representative, or who Robin should be asked. And insert of the land over. Then on line three twenty eight. That was the name of the new tank, which is being referred to as the little village tank. Who say is being referred to by some people? Sort of is like to have not used that terminology.
It it been referred to by the Forest Service.
Referred to that, let's put that by the Florida shirt.
But I was the one that said that, yeah.
Thank you.
And it was a no, it was a nurse there, uh.
Yeah.
It's like.
Okay, that that clarifies that, thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
I thought we put the word erroneously referred to in spite of who has more.
I don't know if I do that, I can't say.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that either.
There's no name associated with it, so.
They're referring to that area as a little village.
Right.
Whereas we talk about Moon Village as the Moon Village. On our shared, yes.
Okay.
Honda develop.
Does anyone have anything else? Promotion approved, may meeting minutes from May twenty fourth twenty twenty three as amended.
Remove.
Second, all in favor?
I.
Steve's name, hey, Kelly's. So, so let's just do it, I agree, because they're gonna ask for continuance.
Sorry.
MC Boone, Crooked Mountain Road, eight block subdivision, they've asked for continuance, read it into the minutes. Very good shot, Maciel, Friday, June ninth, twenty twenty three, three o'clock PM, Carol. Hi Carol, good to catch up with you today, as with the past, I request to continue the eight block subdivision application to the board's hearing on six twenty eight twenty twenty three. In addition, please schedule us for a PRT on six twenty eight as well, if a PRT meeting is held on a day. Topic for the TRP with the villain drops. And a future subdivision off Crooked Mountain Road, thanks. Scotty Michael. So is there a motion to continue this matter till between twenty eight?
I have I have a comment.
Well.
I don't, I I'm not sure. It's fair to keep continuing this stuff. I think that if anyone else is following it. Any other a butter, they have to keep. Track of all the records and stuff up. I think that we should. Limit the amount of times, and and we can say add to this next time it's it, but I think we should limit the amount of times that it gets. It gets continued, if you're ready, you're ready. If you're not, don't come to the board, I mean, because anyone else who wants to. Come to it may not. Be playing catch up with all the. Continuances we're having. So, I mean, you know, it's okay to do it, I understand stuff happens and. You know, you might have continued it once or twice, but this, we're going on the third or fourth time here. So. I would like maybe send something that says. If we don't do it after this time, then we're gonna renotice it. I mean, it it it's not just a a butter, there's us, it's Carol's, every time, you know, you you move something, it gets.
Well, yeah, I have to put a continuance all the time. You never sure what's up, that's what's proven, that is right. So in other words, if he was here doing a presentation, then we could continue, but he's not doing it, so we can do what he follows for that.
I mean, I think just said, look. We're okay with one one more time, but that to that, we're, you know. Well. Renotice it. And the the thinness and center for them to not want to renotice it, because they have to pay for renotication, so. You know, I mean, if they're ready, they're ready, but.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other comments on that?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
It's probably not even giving me any kind of. Vashal, sure. With the Vashals, people, listen to, we know they're gonna be. Don't have to be, but they're not even doing that now.
Right, so. We can ask Carol to let, well, soon we approve the.
I'll make a motion, we continue it. What's the date?
June twenty eight.
June twenty eighth, but that, but then we notify. Um South Beacon Dome, that will be the last day of continuance. And after that, they will, if. They don't meet, we'll have to go for a. Renotication.
Right, is there a second on that?
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
Carolyn Venus, the applicant, can you let them know that we voted on? Yes. Excellent, acceptable, permanent moving to be the image, holding spoke, your box. One fourteen, Lincoln America, food and drink retail market space, front section of existence, a lot of gelato store, Thai gelato store over during the winter months. No additional space will be created, you will be changing restaurant use to combination of restaurant and retail use. There will be little or no additional traffic generated by this business. Does he need site theme with your move for change in use? Hold up.
You just heard it, uh we're just converting the uh gelato drop to a little market, no indoor seating, uh we're not really doing table service or anything like that, it's gonna be. You know, some higher end goods, chips and definitely popcorns, turkey, beverages. Uh use sandwiches that are for takeout, a small deli case with assorted. You know, couscous salad, pasta salad, the like, um we're pretty much cleared by everybody, but the liquor inspector for uh retail sales of beer. Um. Wants us to make, get approval from the town and, you know, kind of slipped my mind on that, to be honest, so I just wanted to run it through you guys and make sure we weren't having a problem. That nobody had an issue with it, that's pretty much the gist of it.
So it's gonna be, you're gonna shut down the gelato business altogether?
No, we're still gonna have the gelato, uh we're still gonna have the gelato, uh deli cooler, cooler, and still sell gelato, but the business name is being changed and reconfigured with the licensing as well.
Okay, so is the business name permanent, or just you're gonna switch out between two names?
No, it's it, this is a new permanent incarnation. Yeah, gelato wasn't selling really good in the winter, as a standalone, as a standalone product.
Twenty below zero.
Yeah, exactly.
A little many, a little many generals there with it.
I mean, there's a lot of walking traffic around there with the condos, we feel that, uh you know, it's gonna provide a service for a lot of those condos. And in addition, you know, we run a two hour wait in the summer at Black Mountain Burger, and if you people wanna shuffle over there and grab a quicker sandwich or something, great. Help alleviate some of the uh the weight, perhaps, not a lot, but maybe a little bit, it'll help.
And when you have any questions?
So. The tables that are there are gonna stay there, Herman?
No tables are inside, no tables are, what's?
That was the before, that was, so you see what you had before.
Okay, so this one's the the before.
I understand. Just shelving and retail goods now. Focus talking about alcohol on site, right? Correct.
I don't see any big deal, but.
Yeah.
All right.
See anything? I don't see any, I don't see any reason I ever make a site planner review.
Okay, so is there a motion that this would not require a site plan review?
So. That's like.
Your second, all in favor?
All right.
Great, good luck.
Thank you, easy, thank you, we plan to just get that new Carol, when you have on.
Um, yeah, oh, Green has to sign it.
Who does?
I think the letter is ready, but Green is gonna sign it from.
Oh, I'll wait for it.
Oh, tomorrow, I was, yeah, oh.
Great, thank you, thank you, everybody, you're the one.
Yeah. Right. One hand's not here.
Yeah, she, I said, I was asked about this, um. And I I, after I did the initial um memo to the TRT, I found that email that said that we weren't in the, didn't trigger. What she did. The deck and the. Roof over the deck didn't trigger the floodplain, you know, any of that. Um, but I wasn't sure about the walls, you know, whether.
So I mean, she's, she basically, your attorney has permission, what's there?
He has permission for what's there, but it's outdoor seating, it's COVID outdoor seating on the boat.
Does she have permission for what's there?
Yes.
It is. I can look.
It's at the, somewhere in here.
When the deck went on, I didn't have a permit for the deck.
Right, so what's? Butch authorized it during COVID.
Yeah.
And we weren't sure, you weren't sure if. There was a real authorization, because we can't find anything.
Right, we didn't have anything.
So we don't know if there's been. An authorization, but there's nothing.
Well, the deck was there, I think, you know, when Jay bought it, right?
There was a little deck.
There was a small deck.
It was a small.
Look at the line, look at the line.
Right.
That Barney, look at the line, I I have a funny case, he was sitting there, I was standing to back with it.
There was a small. Yeah.
Basically, you wanna do is put up temporary wall, tell you down. Was the on your top, correct?
But Bonnie came in during COVID.
Right.
And talked about it, and there must be something.
She got permission from Butch, I believe, to, and because Ron then went and inspected it. But this is, this is when COVID first happened, you know, things just were not. Working out that well, compared with my working at home, sending stuff, they were, print your here. Having to have somebody pick it up, didn't get printed up, you know, so I can see why what might do that. And there was the governor's order encouraging them to allow the outside seating and everything.
Well, that's standard, we know for all the restaurants.
Right, we we were doing it for all the restaurants, and Bonnie came in, but I thought that. We said when COVID was over, they would ask them back in. Or. Uh, if I agree.
Well, it's part of what she requested was she wanted to put a roof over the deck.
At that time, she approved it?
Right.
I don't remember that a lot, my.
She inquired about it, um and she had submitted an incomplete application. For it.
We had a minute, but once she came in to play for. So we can kind of. See what was said.
I don't know, did she come to the planning board?
She came in and we talked about it.
Sounds like they're talking.
I don't remember, I don't remember her coming back.
I believe she came in, she talked to us, because it was during COVID, and she wanted to be able to use that for.
Because I did assert.
I don't.
I did assert with her name. Uh for the minutes and and I have, I only found some old, old minutes when she came. You know, years and years ago.
Yeah.
Wasn't a reason. You know, maybe I didn't spell her name right, or anyway, that was a blow to search.
Yeah, okay, so.
Actually, think about it, we don't have anything, then we need some, sometimes I do.
The structural deck spent enough about fifteen years. As it is giving on. Lucas came, came in, wanted to get it, it definitely stands and now, that's the old deck out, so I know. He came for the planning board to get it. Approved to make the deck bigger.
Yeah.
Basically, they already had the deck to sit on. So I only want to get a special reading, so if you. Put a cover over it, get some heat in there for sitting outside. Now she wants to make it current roof, permanent roof, which.
No, she wants to, she has a permanent roof over it, she has permanent deck, but she wants to. Um, she wants to put in temporarily, she has some temporary walls.
Basically, want to put like the heavy plastic walls that you see in maybe a space heater?
I don't know.
Believe it, but I think for all.
The temporary walls that she would put up in the fall, so that she can continue to serve people on that deck. Um, and I said, are you gonna have the added heated space? She said, no. Um, so it's gonna be pretty hippie. So. Um, but anyway, she was talking about temporary wall. And so if it's temporary walls, then, you know, you're expanding. The use, right, but it's slightly less than the five hundred square feet. Um, you know, that's the, that's a trigger for expansion of use for.
She might have any. Any footprints.
Four hundred something.
No, no, it is.
She's. The outside seating.
Four hundred square feet of restaurants.
Seating, you know, like when we talked to all the other people. They could have outside seating, but they had to. Make sure that they weren't do, they weren't having inside and, you know, so.
Right, we want to talk.
Yeah, that we did down at several places over here.
Yeah.
Over at the Mexican place, we did, but.
Yeah.
But we said, and if you, they were gonna, if if they were gonna turn that in full, full time like that, they would have to come back into the planning board. And they would, we would have to readdress all their parking and everything else along with it. I believe is what we said.
Well, I know when we, Bonnie applied this. He should have bought it, didn't wake it. Originally, Lucas had made that deck bigger way before COVID even came in. It's a table that they use that. Or.
I don't know.
I took the old one out, why not?
Are there any permits for?
That's nothing, nothing, but.
Well, they got a permit for the roof.
Yeah, they get a permit for the roof. Well, they didn't get a permit, they got a budget to say yes.
Yeah.
They had, they had.
Anything that says, what said, yes, either, so it's all. Yeah, I mean, we.
I'm I'm pretty sure he said yes, um the reason why is Jim reminded me that um Ron had gone over to inspect it. And I have a memory of Ron saying that he inspected.
So I know Ron made her. Asked to put the supports for the roof. Inside the deck and not like expand it all further into the rolling. Protection zone.
Okay.
Can we ask Ron if he remembers any of that, just to make?
Well, Ron is very hard.
Well, can we go back to Bonnie and ask her if she has any documentation? We don't.
The applicant is demon here, right, so we have a conceptual based on Carol's.
No, she wanted, she asked me if I would find out, you know, what do I have to do, I want to put temporary walls. Um, in there.
Carol agreed to be her designated.
And I said, I said, I don't know, we have to ask, uh because I was thinking that it was less than five hundred square feet and. Trigger for site plan review is five hundred square feet.
And and you're saying in here it's four hundred and forty, so that's.
Four hundred and forty.
Well, what it does is, the thing is, it adds more park. It's within, it's within a fifteen foot setback, it adds a topic, it it doesn't. Have any difference with the hundred year floodplain. You know, or the shoreline protection or related, but. The. The parking, as I see your concerns, are the parking. And the setback right now are the, are are the issue. Based on what you wrote.
Right, so we could invite her in and have you discuss it in the conceptual. If I'm not doing any.
Yeah, and see if she has any documents for.
I I think that.
Previous approval.
You know, I'm talking once yet.
Danielle, I just think that she needs to come in. And uh come in the better side, well, I have no idea where the deck is. In the site plan, and you know, if she has any doc, or we're waiting for the previous approvals, that would be a good idea.
Then we go on, have a scaping.
Uh, okay, we don't do that pretty well, y'all, so. Okay.
Four hundred and forty feet, square feet, those. Window lens is not a regular site plan. Additional tables in any restaurant, regular place. We give it's ten square feet, they put in one table, practically that's regular site plan. They add on and put in a table. They now have to meet different parking requirements, et cetera. Um. She can come in for conceptual, or she can come straight for her site plan review.
Oh, I heard.
But but, and you know, unless she's gonna cover that deck and not use it, any more, any tables, she needs site plan.
There are tables there.
The tables that are there were part of the COVID, but we said, if you don't use the table.
Agree with you, whatever it's trying to say is, Lucas had the price, they had table there before COVID.
Your table there.
If she walks in with the thing that that shows that 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 was permitted. That's fine, but again, she's choosing. She's going from a a a possibly permitted seasonal to now of permanent. Addition of table space at a restaurant.
So what's what happened was, is you were the first came in, she did go in here, go and look at this plan. And had it. Able to use it, but she didn't do that.
We, yeah, well, I thi- I think we need some more information if she hasn't. And I think she needs to be here, I agree with Danielle, and. You know, I. Certainly. The the support. That they able to answer these questions, and if we haven't, if she has any more information or plans or approvals. Then we should see that as well. If she has any correspondence with Butch emails or something, and say, you know, anything that might support that, I I think we should give her opportunity to come in and say that. So so I would suggest that we move this. Because this is just conceptual, just conceptual.
It's just conceptual.
Yeah, I think it's me asking a question for her, because she came to the window, and she wanted to know. Happened, and I say, you know, we have to check, and then I talk to her again, and she said. You know, there's some, you know, you could ask the planning board about it. So that's what I did. So I'll invite her.
We're just asking, quick, we're conceptual in person.
Yeah, with, and bring any other information, documentation, correspondence, she had Butch, or any other plans that, that shows that she might have had from prior to that. Show that there was tables out there, pictures or anything.
What they, what they messed up was, they came in for the stage change, but it could COVID outside. They already had the message to have tables out there beforehand, Lucas. He didn't incorporate the evidence when he came in the second time.
So I remember just being that there was. There was a difference of tables, it wasn't. Separate tables out there, and maybe she wanted it bigger, or there was uh picking tables, there was, there was something that was different. That.
Luke, they came in and give permission, they beat on it several times and looking at it. We're trying to say, no, I'm telling you what I remember.
We just think the best, you know, that that's without her here, it's hard getting.
Right.
Everybody know what you find a comment?
Of course. Yeah.
Nine, you're trying to find out about three, two, three, four weeks, so I think we did, right?
Every base camp.
Oh.
So. Brian Norton has answered towards quite good. Brian Norton has answered towards questions. No, we sent them questions, but Ryan apparently is willing to commit, is that right, Carol?
Yep, he is.
So, um, why don't we, why don't we view these and then decide? First one. How many seats are there inside? Just like all of the ski lodge facilities at Loon, the seating arrangement is mobile and changes by season, time of season. Events in a variety by the variables. We've always considered the approved documents number of two hundred heads on our capacity.
I like comment on that.
Okay, go ahead.
When you look at the water tap assessment form. And then it gets a hundred and seventy six seats for the approvals. The only documentation that we can go by is what we have. Okay, so if Brian doesn't have any from Loon. Or if the town doesn't have anything saying in particular about this, we can only go by what we have. So, and what we have shows a hundred and seventy six.
Anyone else have any other thoughts on that?
I'm just, Carol, remind you that. Well, um, the occupancy is based on the size of the space. And that's a fighter chiefs. Jurisdiction and that's just how many maximum people can go in a space.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with tables or. You have no googles or anything, just. That's the space and that's the maximum number of people you have in that space. So that's what the two hundred is. Okay, I don't know.
For how many seats does he actually have? So he has two hundred.
Okay, so, so, um, Ryan went in there. Um, so he has, um, hundred and twenty five to hundred and thirty six. Eighty at the picnic tables. Twenty at the high top tables, twenty five to thirty at the bar. So it's totally a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and thirty six.
Okay.
So that's how much is in there, right, you know, when he, when he inspected it on, uh, February tenth.
Okay.
Um, and.
It's like a tiny bit in there.
Oh no, he's been in there. Few times.
So that's all that they have. Then the hundred and seventy six seats on the. Water tap assessment form is, is, is defined, defined on their seating.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the way that I see it.
How many seats are there outside? Much like the interior, the seating arrangement outside has always been there and flexible depending on the need. I believe the permanent assembly says forty five exterior seats. It's worth noting that there, that the forty five relates to the patio itself, not seating we may have in the snow.
Okay, so then Ryan on his, um, visit. Said there were three picnic tables. On the area just outside the main entrance. And that was all that was there with the.
What in?
Okay.
The pictures. That we have.
There was no outdoor seating when they first, the, according to the food and beverage director then.
Okay.
There was no deck, there was no outdoor seating. That might have been Steve mentioned, but there was no outdoors. There was no deck, there was no outdoor, outdoor. Seat.
The adventure is just for the kids, bring the Bob Brown back in originally.
Cause I asked. I remembered who it was, I went and I asked. So.
So there was no deck?
Right, there was no deck and there was, was no outdoor seating. Back then. And again, I think what happened, again to reiterate is that. They started it. And they built it, and it was just supposed to be a place to get in and get warm. And as things progressed with Loon, they, they just. As this food and beverage director said, they just met the needs of whatever people wanted. And I don't think, I, I don't think Loon came into the town and say, hey, look, we need permission for this or permission for that, they just did it. So, and, and, and I think that's truly what's happened here, but it just needs to be cleared up to, okay, now you've got this. Let's permit it, you know, that's all. And that's why I said a site plan review would allow that to be permitted and you could have it all.
They didn't commit for a small change, but nothing like you did it now.
Again, I'd know. I'm, I'm against any of what they have right now, I mean, it's, it's even changed even as of. Last year when they put the bars on, I mean, you know, the, the information that they sent out. Um. Called all new, come, come to our all new approved. And so Pemmy Pemmy Base Camp, I mean, they show people breaking at the bar and it says, uh. We have teamed up to bring a new experience with Pemmy Base Camp, I mean, that, that's all South Peak stuff, but it just, it just keeps evolving. And it just needs to come in and say, okay, here's what we got now.
He's a record of it.
And just like we do with, you know, with other businesses, that's all. That, that's where it all started, that's what I think. But. I mean, and what are the outcomes I'll make is that. We have made others do this. And I. I remember just the other day that when the tiki bar up at the Wales tail came in and they were doing, gonna do drinks and extended hours and, and above, uh, band. They came into the planning board and they. A site plan review, this is kind of sort of the same thing, it just didn't come to the plan board, it's a site plan review, so. I mean, that was kind of an equal comparison.
Okay.
Well, it's not a big deal to come in. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any other questions on the outside seats?
I don't think there was any.
Okay. When was the outside deck constructed? The original panel was constructed, constructed as part of this. Sprung. I mean, she must mean spring structure.
And they call it sprung structure, that's what it is, because that's the official term.
Okay.
Sprung structure.
All right. The footprint has remained the same since the beginning. With the tax assessment document from that, the year coming open, show the deck. I don't have that, but maybe you do.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to check this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think it. Again, we have to go by the facts, and if we can't find. Any approvals for the deck. From the planning board or. Uh, an assessment, that showed that the deck is there. Then we go to. Taking into consideration, it probably wasn't, because it's not fact supporting it.
They came into the deck, basically, the two people. Sitting in the slot in front of the tent.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think, I think that was another thing where Loon said, look, we gotta put something on here, cause they're sitting in. And, 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 and they just, they didn't. It just need to be permitted, that's all.
Anyone have any questions about the outside deck? Was there any permit issued to construct the outside deck? It is my under. My understanding that it was included in the permits issued to the project as whole. The bridge and patio would have been required to cross, broke there for access to the snow right from the opening. As Joe stating in the, stated in the planning board meeting, this came before the planning board was approved. Maybe that never translating into, into writing or somewhere.
Yeah, and we can't.
We remember them coming into that, Carol?
Maybe years ago, they put, put the tenting, and we were gonna.
Yeah.
So beer brought in. On the standing and the tables.
Yeah.
And the deck was put on outside. Saying, officially, the deck, and otherwise you walk in, it's sometimes it comes to the deep, not only ankle.
Yeah.
So the deck was put in two thousand and seven?
That's two thousand, well, uh, three, I think, when it was. And then in two thousand. Or two thousand and five, when they came in, two thousand and seven, when they got their permit.
And so the permit stayed two thousand and seven.
Well, they came in first with the conceptual.
They came in two thousand and five. For the approval and then they didn't get their permit until two thousand and seven.
And they have the deck on between the two.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it even happened then, but again. When we look at, when we look at all the other applications and that gets come before, we, it's like we just did with Bonnie, we're saying, okay, show us. Show us facts, they, that you had this, that you have the approval to have that. Or how many seats you had, or, and, and if we don't have that information, we got to. Consider that is probably not, it's not there, so we just need to clarify it and. Get it and, get it in writing, get it as a matter of a, a planning board meeting and get it approved, so they know what they have and go forward with that.
I'm good with the questions on the permit for the outside deck, see if we have any else. What does the basement level kitchen consist of and what is it used for? The moment Loon has basic minimum equipment, pre-basing ice machine, mopping, ventilation oven, tilt skillet. Freezer and refrigerator, other minor appliances, it's not service kitchen.
I don't, so what do you call it? A kitchen, it's got, it's got a convection oven, it's got a refrigerator, it's got, and. I can tell you that when my son got married, his wedding is there. And that's where they cooked all the stuff, was downstairs, so.
They heated it up.
Oh, it's put downstairs.
Okay.
Uh, that prime rib, they cook dinner in the convection oven and. It's, it's a big, it's a blotch, I think, one of those, they had that down there then, I don't know what they have down there. But I'm talking with that food and beverage director.
How long ago did your son get married? But I mean, originally, it was just. Who will keep food warm by the place to.
There, there was a kitchen there.
Yeah.
And I talked with the food and beverage director, he said that that was the first, originally that was going to be place to store. For skiers to store ski lofts down there, and then they, they, Loon took it over and said, no, they didn't want to do that, they were, they started scoring Loon stuff, then they turned it over to a. A kitchen first down there. And that's where they had their first kitchen down, ace, but it just kind of, things kind of morphed from one thing to another, you know?
Any other questions on the kitchen? A meal served on with disposable dinnerware that does not require washing. For the most part, yes, but again, depends on many circumstances.
So most part, yeah.
Ryan went, we're using, um. They serve the beer, mixed drinks in plastic cups, you know, and the food was being served in paper product.
I think they're right, so, but I think they have a lot of, uh. They do special events and stuff like that where they, you know, where it's not.
But is the catering service bring the plates and all that kind of stuff and then take them away, or do they wash?
Well, yeah, they just wash it, I mean, I, I can tell you, if my son was paid for plates. Remember that, it was China. It's a nice place that was venue, you know?
Usually most of the paper products, you don't have to wash.
Right.
Well, the reason they went to the paper products was so they, so that it could have a discounted.
Or, yeah.
Fee from the town, you know, pumping up the water and sewage that fee. We use the paper disposal, so.
So that is.
Less employees, so. That probably. But that's why they went, they, they had to pay for some.
So that, you know, that question has nothing to do with the planning board, the site board, it's just a charge of. The water tanks. Do you have any approval documents related to this site since the original approval? All I have is what you provided me for review, Joe mentioned in this meeting that this was all. In front of the planning board approved. Rick Kelly has assured me of the same.
But nobody has the documentation shows that. Again. If I come to a planning board, we can tell you that. At my house, I had. The planning board approved a whole nother. I was out there, gonna, I, I, I know they didn't. You know, what are you gonna do, like, that's all I'm saying. If, if it's not in writing, then it's not true, you know, you don't have it. You gotta have it written, it just. I mean, I think his, you know, in his paragraph. Down below there where he talks about what seems to be lost in translation here, that we're not a tourist attraction. Well, even, even tourist attractions get. Um, have to complete site plan review, again, as I just mentioned, you know, the tiki bar, you know, that came in, there were other things that came in, so. And even also on a tourist attraction, it's pretty much, uh. It's. It may not be for season, but it's as darn close as you can get to a, to a resort, you know, I mean, it's skiing. Gondola in the summer, mountain biking, uh, I mean, I think, and, and the fall are open. So it's really, the, the shoulder seasons are next to nothing. So it's really not, I mean, it, it is, it. You know, I talk about food service. Being only a small piece of, of, of their, what they provide, I mean. They've got like six different food service locations on, I don't consider that to be a small piece, you know, if you look at some of cafeteria, camp three. Octagon. They used to have something out there by the train where they show up, they skis, I don't know if that's still there, then you get to go for a slouch. Also, I mean, and the food service is a, is a big part of it and. You know, it's. We.
Yeah, it's, a restaurant's a restaurant regardless of where it is, we just have to make it a determination here whether there's something.
Whether it's been, whether it's been a change, and again, you know. When, when you look at the. The information that, that had, that they put out. For this year. South Peak gets a new Pemmy Base Camp. I mean, and Cisco Brewery comes in, this office of all the little mountain. You know, advertising that it's all new, you know, everything is all new, our, our new bars, our new, we got a band, we got, so. And I have nothing, that's no problem, I, I went there, it was a good time going, I'm just saying that. I think it just needs to commit for site plan review, tell us what you got. Tell us what you want and, and then we'll just. It'll be a matter of record and it can be done locally. Should be nothing real difficult.
Well, it's the house in the long run, in future, they want to add something out there, you have. Something tanky to go by there.
And then in future years, you'll be able to look and say they came in for the planning board, this is what they had, we can say. How many seats do you have, I'll be, you got a bar now, and now you got a fan, and I, so it shows all that. And if they want to do. Venue, uh, we call it. Special events and have, have weddings and stuff, have, uh, china plates here, then they can have that, but maybe they need. Pay the towns a little something, maybe the town's been missing out on some revenue there too, so. And we'll make, clarify a little of that down too, so I. I mean, it makes more sense to get it on record as what it is now, what it's gonna be, just like we're doing with South Peak and the master plan and all of that stuff, are you kinda? It's good every now and then to go back and. Or to take a look at it and put it on record, put you have.
We just finish up, I'll read the last paragraph. We will have the video of that planning board meeting up tomorrow morning. I just checked and I see that we haven't had a chance to put it up yet. We saw it, I watched the video, I think Paul's main concern is not giving Loon special privilege and making sure we are playing by the same rules as everyone else. I agree with this concern, however, what seems to be lost in translation here is. That we are a tourist attraction. Our operations are much broader than just a restaurant or bar. As a tourist attraction, we have more flexibility on our property than a restaurant or bar would fund is, because food service is only a small piece of what we provide as a service. In my opinion, planning board needs to consider the scope of ski area operations when they consider something amounts to a significant change in use. For example, if the local coffee shop in town turns to a bar, I would think that is a significant change, because it's a completely different business model for that business. For one food venue or a ski resort to change into another type of food venue, it's not a significant change, because our primary business is still a ski resort. I maintain that our operations at Pemmy are consistent with the ski lodge that was approved in site plan review and consistent with other ski lodges on our property.
I mean, it, it, it's not just. The Wales tail, if you remember that tiki bar, if you think back about even Clarks, when they put that snake slide in, they came in to. Clark's the place that has all sorts of amusements there, and we made him come in for the snake slide, so we do make. You know, amusement.
They were expanding.
They were expanding, that wasn't me doing something.
Well, that's true, but I mean, if, if you could go by his logic, logic, uh. Clarks is an amusement place, why would you make Clark come in for?
The same reason Loon comes in when they put in a room left, that's an expansion.
They didn't come in for site plan review, but it's not left.
Yeah.
No, I think they asked.
They asked, we said, no.
They came in. Talked about. It's a big difference between a whole new, I mean, every ride that Wales tells.
What's that mean?
For every new ride that Wales tell them, um.
They came in, they came, and a tiki bar and a band and all that, when they came, that, that all came.
More than, that was a long time ago, but it's more than twenty years ago.
The tiki bar, I don't know, OJ probably.
It was twenty, yeah.
You must remember when that happened, uh, but I can remember when it came in because it was like. Yeah, you know, they were gonna do it after hours.
Because the after hours thing, because I believe that there was a. It, it's part of the original thing, you know, like we closed at six, now.
And this, this here, their, their new thing with, with the Cisco Brewery and, I mean. When the list goes down, this, this place still stays open past that. And it does Christmas and New Years and it stays open longer on weekends.
Sort of babes, sort of.
Anyway, like I said, it, it, to me, it's, it. I, I, I like the venue, I have no problems with that, I think we should, like we do with everything else, I really think we should. There's been enough change there that it should be tiny, good.
Okay, so. Mister Norton is willing to come in. But the board like to invite him in for the first meeting in July. You make the determination now that it needs site plan review or determination that nothing, nothing further is needed.
In my opinion, I think we ask him to come for site plan review, so I have him just present what he's got, and while we approve it, disprove it, boom, off he goes.
Steve.
But he should come in. It's not a matter of asking him what he wants, it's kind of what we, the planning board think.
He's often committed, you, you know, you can ask him directly.
But I think. I think he should come in for site plan review, and I think what he should do is he should. Bring the Pemmy base camp up to date. And say that this is what we have here, this is what we're doing, and this is what we're gonna do. And, and just get a good look at that. And then, then he's got that, it's on, then it will be as a matter of planning board record, and that's why we can ask to identify seats. What he's got for food service, what he's got for, he's got the band, he's got the extra bars, I mean, the bars, those are into the outside seating if he wants them. If he wants to put that, um. Wait, the overseas container back in. He could ask for that, you know, and then.
Well, I think he realizes he has to come in for approval for that.
Right, but, but, why not do it all, what I'm saying is do it all at once and identify what he has on site. Now, and he's the owner of the property, so he's the owner of the building. For those who owns the property.
We're dealing with menus here, not who owns what, whoever owns the property is responsible.
Owns the structure is responsible, right?
Well, it's a little complicated, it's a little bit like the post office building down here. One person owns the building, person that came in for site plan review is the tenant. That's, you know, the Bodhi Drinks or whatever they call it. The tea garden.
But OJ may comment.
Drinks, but, and they both signed the application.
Right.
But the person who's actually coming for permission is the tenant.
I understand, but the owner has to sign off on that.
Correct. But the Pemmy base camp is a little bit different in that Mark happens to be. Doing business as both the landowner of the land underneath the tent. And he also is doing business as the restaurant group. Working as a caterer supposedly for. Moon Mountain Recreation Corporation, which owns the tent.
But Loon is the one that owns the tent and they're the one, we've never.
So there's a ground piece of law.
Right, but I'll take that comment about, we've never made somebody with. Who is a leasing or lease or come in because they wanted to make a change or something like that before you said. What was it you said at one of those meetings, you said?
That, that the, the use, the improved use of any property. Goes with the property regardless who's owning it, who's leasing it, or whatever.
So there's a different, different owner of the house. On a part, or the, or the structure on a property. The person who owns that structure, I think, would be the one that has to get the permit, because they're the ones that are held, I would think. Held accountable to make sure they comply with the planning board rules and regulations. The landowner can't, the, the landowner can't do anything, the person who owns, who's allowing a tenant to go in and. Whether it's a bar or a strip bar or whatever it is. You know, you, they're the ones that say, you know, you guys are waiting, you, you can't have that there, you can't rent that to somebody to have it there, because it's not allowed.
If, if it's a true land lease, where someone owns the land and someone else owns the building. That would. In my opinion, that would have to be a co-appropriate. Because the owner of the building. Has no parking, has no setbacks.
Right.
Has no control over landscaping, lighting, signage, or, or off-building signage, okay, so, so. It depends on, I mean, it depends on who controlled what, if, if the building owner. Or land, who's leasing the land has full control over all of that land. Whatever they get approved for parking or setbacks, whatever, um, is going to apply to that land that someone else owns. So both parties need to, in my opinion. Sign off on that, because if we approve that some land. Um, let's see, can do something to someone else's land. Who are you to pull parking lot on my land? So I think that that the land owner has to be a party to any application and, and approval.
And which it was, because the original applicant, or the original person, it wasn't for Doge. He was the original one that came in and said that.
And what Brian thinks is that Brian should come in. Because he's just considering. Uh, the Hampshire Restaurant Group as a caterer. That he hired.
What OJ is saying is that. For Doge, he owns the property. And Loon owns structure, so if I'm not mistaken, you're saying they both, as both applicants should be coming in. Regarding what they want, what they want to have there. I mean, that, I mean, I don't know that we've ever had any, we have any.
I've never been involved in a land lease. Situation where someone owns the land and someone else owns the, the building, I've dealt with, you know, we've all dealt with. A lease situation, um, well, I guess, you know, Herman owns his condo, but there's other places where. Whoever in the building doesn't own the building.
And I don't think what Herman is, he does, he owns the building inside the wall, he doesn't own the back left.
Right. Right.
I don't know how it's set up over there.
So when Herman moves in though, when Herman comes in, then it's. Herman's just presenting, but. The guy who wants a parking, I'm gonna say, I don't have any parking spaces for him.
Well, you have to, you have to notify the Congress or something.
Yes, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, again, that's. Situation where.
I think you're right, I, 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 I do, I, I, I think that both need to come in, but I think that, that's part of what. Got clarification we can get when it comes into site plan review, they both can come in and say, this is what we intended. To have in this structure on this park. And then we clarify it all and it's, it's. Done. It gives, it, it, it gives total clarity to what's gonna be there, what they want it for, who owns what. And it, it's as part of the planning board record. It just makes sense.
Good, I'm a real estate law, OJ, maybe I've taken it, I didn't like it. I've taken class in myself, but if you own the land, you're leasing to somebody, with the friction the way you do the land. You are, you got to lead in as a control of the land along with pay your rent, right, correct? And when it's put on, so you should have them, you want. A few come in for site plan review and often notify the owner.
That's, you know, the thing is, Joe, we don't have, we're not privy to what that lease agreement says, so. You know, no, but it's, it's not pervert to start me doing leases and make a determination. As what? Alright.
On quantity, two thousand and seven Horizons, um. Survey.
Was that in fact, into recently back?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the final subdivision plan approved signed by Pat Rockbridge, two thousand and seven. Includes the whole deck across the whole front. So when he says that, when was the outside deck constructed and the ready permit construct the outside deck, then it's signed from it like that.
We gotta find that.
What's the date on that?
Nine twenty-six. Oh, seven. Some other interpretation of the script, I don't know. That'd be my guess.
That's what it looks like, it's nine twenty-six.
So top writing board approved it in two thousand and four.
Pat Rock, we signed this in two thousand and seven.
So, so what I'm saying is the original in two thousand and four, when it was approved, it didn't have any debt there. Between two thousand and four and two thousand and seven, that's when the debt came.
I'm saying that Pat Rock, who signed this as a planning board chair in two thousand and seven. For whatever reason, he signed it, I mean, if he just. With no public hearing and the planning board weren't here. That's not.
Every thought, certainly, like. When they came in, it seemed a while later because they wanted out of the deck, I could be walking flush to the big problem.
Okay, so, so.
But.
Seems like a very valid reason why from two thousand and four to two thousand and seven, things changed, but here's your permit.
Yeah, 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 right, I mean, and, and the, when you look at the, um. The permit that was issued was zero seven dash four four. Two thousand, it says on it, it said eleven ten, two thousand and four, it was approved. Again, really what's historically been done and what we. You know, like I said, it's, it makes more sense to just account for what's there now and move on.
We're just moving on around and we can show it in back.
I mean, the recent change of the bars and the. Band, that, that, that whole recent change, so just bring it all in, just. Alright.
Okay. Steve.
I agree. It's about the same time they put in a zip line across.
Daniel, do you have any thoughts on this?
It would be nice to have a league of, you know, updated, it hasn't been a number of years.
I mean, updated, only if they made a change. I mean, you feel there's enough of a change.
Honestly, no, I don't.
Will be out of the wheels, fail business now. So also, it's not one.
Great. We're done that way so far. I hope you guys see.
Alright.
Okay, good thoughts.
So if you got a list of questions. He's permitted for a hundred and seventy-six seats. He has a hundred and thirty-four less inside, forty-five outside, that's within the approval. So that doesn't trigger anything. When was the outside deck constructed and was there any permit issued to do that, we see that, yes, there was a permit to do it. And it was two thousand and seven, so that doesn't trigger anything. The basement level kitchen. Um, you could. Call the convection oven and tilt skillet, uh, cooking rather than be heating, possibly. Um, but I don't think pieces of kitchen equipment in a restaurant bring a site plan review. Um, but that could be part of a greater discussion with the discount they go out on the waterman sewer points. Um, if in fact they're now cooking there and. Using no, um, non-disposable dinnerware that they're, they're washing on site. But I would ask that question before I. Made any decision on that, but again, I think those are water tap fee questions, not site plan questions. Um, and I think that between the approvals that we have here, I think it's. You know, we've had all the information and approvals they have, so, yeah, I say no. Okay, is there anything there?
Alright, Joe. Alright, I go along, I don't, I don't think there's anything here myself.
So what did Joe say?
Joe said you want to own with OJ.
Oh, okay.
So was there a motion?
Bring it on the table.
Alright. And wait, what is, what is your motion? Motion to require this to go to site plan review. Okay. Don't we know, sir, a second?
Or to go to site plan interview?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it, go to site plan review.
Alright.
Because he made a motion not to go to site plan.
Well, he should just press motions in the affirmative.
So he, he made the motion to bring it on the table so we can vote it one way or the other and, and, and not have this come up every, so. You're making a decision.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor of having to go to site plan review, raise your right hand and say aye. Pose.
Joe raised this.
Say. Joe raised it?
Yeah.
Site plan? Okay, so three.
Three to two.
Three, two, no, alright, so what is decided to sneak, go to site plan preview? Okay.
That's one of my understanding of you, what you, you said. You change your mind.
No, I want to go inside my interview.
Okay. Okay, so Carol, you let him know that. Alright. Inquire about lock styles, BBA Close Date LLC. And it's in high MLLC, fuel box eleven thirteen, North March, zero two zero five nine, that twenty-one one three. Put container unit building on one fifty-five A street, map one eighteen, lot sixty-four, stored for less than one hundred eighty days. Does he need site plan, does he need second review approval for change in site?
Okay, so I think he understands, um, that. He needs to come for, I mean, I've sent him another email saying you gotta come for a site plan review, if that's a change you're gonna make. What you talked about at the conceptual, we're talking about revising your site plan. Um, and the fact that you were now storing. A pre-made container building or one of the units that he talked about. Uh, at the conceptual, um, he has a limit of a hundred and eighty days, so we have it in the calendar. Has to be gone by a hundred and eighty days or he's gonna get an approval. Or whatever change he happens to wanna make. And he has to come for site time review, so he knows that. Um, he's been notified of that, so it's like a waiting game. For a hundred and eighty days for storing that. That thing.
Okay, Paul. Okay, Paul.
Where are we getting? The fact that he has a hundred and eighty days.
And that's the temporary building versus a permanent building?
So when I look at our, when, when I look at our ordinance as. A temporary structure. Versus what I think it is, is a temporary sales location. And if you, if you look at our, our. Definitions of temporary sales location, it gives you forty five days, not a hundred and eighty days. And that's.
Well, he didn't say yet, he's, he hasn't told us that he's gonna.
But i- it is a temporary sales location because it sits over there with. Before sales, you know, how, how to get them. I mean, he, he's selling them over there with, where, where to contact? So, I mean, you go on, go up site, he's selling them.
Is this him, him, himself?
No, it's, uh, I don't know what the name is, but.
Looks like a billboard.
Yeah, I saw it, but I mean, I just.
There's a, it's a.
He had just the boundary, he first probably put a sign on it, not. Not the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who it is, whether it's Sam.
We, or. CDM, I just.
Do we, do we have a picture of that?
Is the storage unit.
Yeah, south shore.
Turned out some water and sewer, I mean, is it functioning, so, so. It can't be a sales office, I mean, an office would have to have functionality to it.
Well, at least that that.
It, it.
Oh, well, does it, I mean. Do you need that? I mean, in today's world, all you really need is. You can have an office anywhere you want, if you.
Okay, what if, what if it was a, um, motorcycle?
I agree, I, 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 what if someone started selling cars?
Something he's, something he's selling.
If someone sells a car in their lot, if selling a car on my lot. They're selling the car in their lot, this guy is selling. South Shore container homes on that lot. So it's a temporary sales location, same thing that we had when. There was one across from the Legion.
Right.
On the other side over there, they were selling stuff, selling things there, remember that was a temporary sales location.
Structure that was on site, in a mobile room, something.
I know. I understand that.
Outside of that structure.
Right.
And just to me, it's inventory.
I just, you know, I, I, my question is. There was, what if he brought a lot of plywood and set it on the site in, in anticipation of constructing the building? Right, it is, isn't that, when that, when that trail, if you consider building materials?
Yeah, but for something that's not already proved.
I don't know, it's building materials, you wouldn't make them get a permit, definitely by not.
And this has already come in for conceptual, but it hasn't really come in for anything else other than conceptual. But it's still, to me, I don't have a problem with, OJ, with that sitting there. The problem I have is with that sitting on it, because that says he's selling that there. And if that, if, if, if that box wants to sit there. That's fine, but the signs should come off it, because it shouldn't be selling, it's not an improved sales location.
Okay.
He has no, he has no permit to sell these houses or whatever it calls there. So he can put them there, store them there, only one, like you said, door, plywood store, a car store, but. He can't, can't sell them there until. It gets permission.
I mean, is someone's building house, you know, in town, and they have. Your electric, electrician puts his sign, plumber puts his sign, the general contractor puts his sign.
Yeah, but those are.
Looking for businesses, that make those all temporary sales locations?
But those, but those are, those are.
I mean, they're selling services.
Those are contractors, someone puts a tiny home. In their parking lot and says. For sale. That, that, that's a sales location, I mean, a tiny home just looks. Yeah. Like I said, I have no problems with, with the. Box, overseas box, that just the sales location sign should come off, because he doesn't have the right. He doesn't have a permit to sell them there.
Okay. Can you begin? Go. You have anything? Have you learned? Go ahead.
Andrew, put it in the, for the anticipation, I think you're trying to show us what it could look like. Where he puts it up, but. He had to come forth and after give it in feedback, that's the first time he came in.
Well, I mean, he's, you know, he's being kind of presumptuous just to put it up there, a lot.
I never heard anything about it till tonight, because he's been talking.
Over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Have you received any complaints about it, Carol?
Yeah, two.
Okay, two more of this.
I didn't.
Well, actually, uh, Jane said.
I didn't notice.
Are you paying attention?
I, I didn't know, it's probably the other ones.
Jane.
Jane.
Jane and.
I had a few people.
I didn't, what, yeah, I, I said, I, I just, I told him, I didn't think.
I can send the audit tonight, I should have go, go. So, so we totally.
Sorry, is the, the. Should we send him a letter, like advising him that? He's putting that on there at his own risk.
What do you mean?
Well, he's gotta move it if he doesn't get site plan approval for the building.
Well, you said you sent him a letter, it said he had to remove it, but he had a hundred and.
Well, he said he had a hundred and eighty days, because.
Right, I was bringing up that it, it, it should be forty five if classified as a sales off. And then we were really thinking about.
It, it takes that sign.
Eight hundred and eighty days, forty five.
If he takes the sign off it, you give him a hundred and eighty days, I don't care, just take the sign off it, because then, it, it's, to me, it's no longer. Could be conceived as a temporary sales location. He's not selling, he, he's not advertising, he's selling these things, it's just sitting there.
Well, maybe he just, you know, got a deal and he couldn't pass it up and he was hoping.
Yeah, maybe, pretty convenient, I think.
He was hoping, he was hoping that it would be.
I think it's a nice.
A little more warm and fuzzy to go.
I have heard too many, really, too many people say. That they like a separate one, and, and that one happened to be all that matters, I guess, it was in the butter. So I think they look pretty cool.
Yeah.
But I've heard a number of people say, oh, they don't put ten on Main Street, so, you know? And the butter dog was.
They can come to the hearing.
Yeah, and the butter dog was pretty cool, so I.
It's not really, they just need it all.
Let's look at, too much, it's like they're falling into a potential application, right? If he takes a sign off.
Do they need to sign off? I'm okay with it, sitting there. I just don't think he's being presumptuous, I'm glad to sell him there, while he's got, uh, a, uh, conceptual going and. Doesn't have any permission to sell them there and. You know, if he wants to leave it there. Take a part of its space, that's okay. So.
All right, so.
So, so I guess there are three, three options. He's gotta move it because he doesn't have site plan approval. He can leave it as it is, or he can leave it as long as he takes the sign off of it.
Well, but I think OJ is right, I think it's the amount of days, and I've got no problem with him leaving it for a hundred and eighty, whatever that days are. If he takes the sign off it, that's.
He leaves the sign on, he has forty five days.
If he leaves the sign on, he's got forty five days.
Well, that's, we'd consider it a contemporary sales location.
What if he gets assigned for it?
Like a billboard.
He would need it, yeah, I mean, he, he would need, he would need to commit site plan review.
Yes, you know, if you put up a billboard. If you put up a billboard in town, that doesn't make that plot.
Well, but it says temporary sales location, it says that any use. As far as a temporary sales location, may be subject to site plan review or the state local laws.
May.
Uh, that's the may, you're right. Again.
More people are gonna see it on the internet than they would have.
He's gonna put in commercial, just having.
I just said, I was over, I was over at Oshawn one day. When he first, after he put it there, there was three or four cars in the parking lot looking at him.
I, I've been over Shaw.
The Oshawn, I never noticed it.
Really?
No.
I.
It happened to be the first week that he put it there. And then, and I said, what the hell's that? But then the next day I was over at Oshawn, and it was three or four cars, and then they were walking around it, looking at, who it is. Maybe there is some interest, something like that, I don't know, but. I just think the, you know, the, that's presumptuous. Yeah.
Yeah, because, well, and he's, you know, at his own risk, trucking it up here.
Then it's temporary.
Well, I mean.
Well, you don't vote separate. He'd be wanting to leave it there for, to the electrical nodes.
It's got a hundred and eighty days. But again. I, you know, if I, if I was gonna build this other building. So you already had a group, or you brought a lot of plywood. Wouldn't be having this kind of, it's, that's right, believe the materials on a site.
Even at that point, it's really nothing, it's just by the wood, and then comes something else.
Well, I think.
And you can already pull, but it's back, it has a hundred and eighty days, so.
Yeah. I don't stack.
Well, it didn't occur to me that he, I mean, the, the sales trailer thing did not, did not occur to me at all.
So we took another look at it.
He's, he doesn't have a blood cadence.
For now.
So it's, I mean, it's made something like that, and it's, he needs a permit.
Maybe, maybe that, whatever, if, if it gets hooked up to utilities. Becomes a functioning. Unit, whether you wanna call it a sales office or, but it's functioning with water, sewer, electric. That, that would trigger site plan. If it's a container box sitting on a property, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any. Well, it doesn't look like there's any plans to talk about anything, come and speak any term for it.
Right now, it's just the. Did the box in there?
For this versus permission for sale.
I don't think there's anyone here like, that thinks you should move it.
I.
I know.
I'm not saying, what's that?
I don't like the idea that they inspection on Main Street. I think the billboard, we should do is take the sign down for. You know, have forty five days.
I think you should take the sign down, and they can leave it there for the hundred days.
Right.
Hundred ninety days.
Right.
That, that it's, it's compromised between everything, and it kind of says, look, if you wanna put that there, your own risk and leave it there. You know, you're not advertising it for sale, it's, it's.
Obviously took a chance that he knew it.
Right.
I'm sure he knew it was gonna be a discussion.
And truly different between forty five and a hundred and ninety days, that's their law, but I mean, still. He's gonna have to come in somewhere between plus time and say, hey, I'm either gonna. Put these things there or not. He didn't put it there.
Communication with him was, is a new process to apply to site plan approval.
He makes, when I talk to him, he makes it sound like he does.
There hasn't been any other activities since they set the trail there.
No, but, but he'll, he'll call me and, you know, put a few questions to me, and I think he's on the verge of doing something on. You know, a long time ago, but, before I hear from him again. So. I don't know.
I think that's a good point, though, I mean, maybe you could ask him that, say, look. What are you gonna, you know? Do, do you have any con? Idea of coming in, and if so, when? And if he says, look, I'm, you know. And, and you get a better idea. We don't even know why he said get it there, is he really trying to sell them so that he can find? People to. Buy him on, on that location, is that really what he's trying to do, or is he? You know, what's he trying to do here? So we, we don't even know, because he hadn't talked to him about it, right?
Ryan has.
What, Ryan talked to about that trailer?
Yeah, which was two or three times.
And what did he say? What was the reason why you put it there?
He just, uh, he, he was being kind of a close note about it. He just wanted, he was just gonna park it here.
Although I think it takes a sign off.
I've seen it before.
You'll find out, oh, no, he wants to tell, take that line off.
Why don't we send him a letter that? We would like on a, comply with site plan approval as quickly as possible. And in order to leave it there for a hundred and eighty days, you have to take the sales sign off of it.
Right. Perfect.
Is everyone good with that?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Joe?
I guess I just question that, like, we want him to apply for site plan review as soon as possible, I, I'd say, give him whatever deadline, if it's forty five days, if it's a hundred and eighty days, if he has to take the sign off.
So then what, just say, if.
I mean, we already gave him a hundred, basically, we've given him a hundred and eighty.
No, but we can say, we didn't like the sign. But we can say. The staff can say, look.
Well, they gave him their ball.
What's, oh, oh, you gave him a hundred and eighty, a lot of them gave.
Yeah, we can say, look, the planning board met on this because we had some complaints, and. Unless. We're, we're considered a temporary sales location. And if you wanna leave the sign on, you got forty five days, but if you wanna take the sign off. You can, and he can take the sign off after forty five days, gets his honor, right? And get his honor, so he could leave the sign on it for forty five days. Take the sign off it and get the hundred and ninety. So. Hundred and eighty, whatever. I think, I, I, you know, we're gonna encourage them to either do one or the other, and just leave it there, does. This, I think, will do that.
What are you thinking, Dan, you know?
You.
I've read your mind.
I've done one.
I would just not give him, I would just. I'm giving too, give too many variables, I would just say, you know, either.
It takes a sign off.
Sign off, yeah, that'll give you a hundred and eighty days, if you choose not to take the sign off.
You got forty five.
That's.
That's fine.
And then, and if he takes it off on the fourth or the fifth day, I think we should still have to get rid of it.
Then it comes just storage, like everyone's been saying, Daniel. He's just storing something there, he's not selling it, he's not, he's storing it there.
So different, store a piece.
I figure all the ones the wheels, they would have, DNA has, AB has, would mount has, they would have to move theirs too. It's technically just a third year, it's never a building, but.
It's like their actual storage unit.
You see the inside of that, so.
Oh, that's really constant, it's inside of.
Let's kind of make a decision, yes.
So we already decided, right, the board, the board decided that we were gonna do. Forty five days for the sign. A hundred and.
Hundred and eighty days without the sign.
Yeah, and give him his choice. I'll make that motion.
All right, Joe, just one more second. You read it all, say it one more time, what the motion is.
That we. Advise him that he has forty five days with the current sign on it from the time he put it there. And if he takes the sign off, he's got a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey.
Yeah, the insides got. You know, those, uh.
A public participation.
Yeah.
The kid exploring, yeah.
Are there any other business?
If we don't, bring our phone.
The next, um, oh, planning board meeting. So we, uh, the, uh, some people are gonna present their new master plan, and I would like to invite the board to select. Attend, so they can have a better bit.
Right, and I, I believe that Karina's already passed the board's segment.
Yes.
They're willing to, they agree.
Correct.
And she's gonna do the proper notice for that.
Yeah.
I think, I think that Jamie, I've already posted it, we're on vacation, so I think twenty one.
So are they coming in for a. With a complete master plan?
I'm sorry, can I check?
Are they coming with a completed master plan?
We will know.
We will, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
They suppose, their attorney supposedly has been working with their attorney. But I don't, and haven't been speaking to our attorney, but he was. They have, um, ended up here in a meeting with some ideas that they have, um, when they were. Based on feedback, they were going to the. We get, um. I don't know, we haven't, we haven't seen, we've only seen bits and pieces, but they are gonna come to that, um, plot subdivision, that. Eight plot subdivision that they. Have submitted already. And then they have. Been put on hold.
So the panel review committee has had a chance to weigh in on the, the. Master plan.
It's not, no. It's just more ideas, it was like an idea exchange.
I think we're gonna approve.
So, so my question would be that, that. And I guess, I, I can ask that, that, the meeting that we had with them, is that. The open space and all the other questions that we had. With regards to the master plan, are they gonna come prepared to answer those as well?
Well, I think that they still don't buy into your view. That. So I, I think you just have to deal with it when they come in here.
That's, it's, it's not my view, it's what's in the ordinance. It's not my view.
It's telling me that.
Okay.
The ordinance is very specific about. Having dedicated land, you were.
I'm just telling you. We'll have, we'll have to, we'll have to sway the board.
Okay, there, yes, you know, bring your questions for the twenty eighth form. Yeah.
I want to thank you about all of the South, South Peak. It's way you can expedite that. Quite fast than we may have now. Because what they could do. The fourth actually kind of go on Forest Service land, right? But Golden has the land that's not gonna be built on, the camp it goes on. On the other side, in property. You can actually swap land for land to Forest Service, they will do this. They've done it several times, making it before. So in other words. The land will be part of the town waking up by the Forest Service, but. By the Forest Service land that we're going to have would be, they kept. Forest. Doing so, you get it down right, you could order that right, then worry with Forest Service, but they want to take. They have looked into that?
No, that's a good idea, yeah.
Fox has done it. You go to the bar, cook it up, the end of your left. Fox had a big chunk of fifty plus acres, the young girl died. They logged it off, the American, the idea was get. Forest of fifty acres on the south side, which is. The American minutes wants the forest piece per piece. And when they, the whales there, not where they were the. Camp ground. At the, uh. The old campus well, camp well. They were talking about the piece of land that Indy had bought. Right, the piece of land for them and Indy had gone to Forest. The Forest there, they agreed to, they want to swap piece of land, help them out. The piece of land down below, they were glad to do it, cause. Would be, it wouldn't exploit any 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 disheater. Then several times the town wasted, bought land for land. Equal amounts, but it's expedite things faster. Wouldn't have to deal with all. The other boards coming on, if you have the land outright, you don't worry a lot of the federal board. So they. I'm gonna call the coast in the region, make sure that you want to go along with it. In the same time. Either it could be about three, four acres. Could be five, whatever. You could actually. Relax the trident and the density with the five acres on his property. You know what I'm saying? In same density, but the land he have. When we continue to land, go ahead and review it, we want to thank man to make up for it. Land, you won't, the land is gonna build on. Give the force it with land, it won't be building on anyway, correct? It would be, it wouldn't make any difference. To the overall plan.
If you did it acre for acre, it wouldn't change the density. But it would have to include all of the land between the tank. And his land.
And his land.
Because it's not just the tank, it's the pipes going up and back.
So probably come to about five acres altogether.
So let's say it's five acres, he gives up five acres, that doesn't. Doesn't change density.
It's the, give them what they have to happen. Give them back, we want to. Grant the green deal, but not maybe a year, two or three, whatever they.
Well, what 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 really would do. Is it would stop the study and beat up. Cause. They would be privately in a land that's being swapped then. There wouldn't be no, no need for that study. That might be real, a real incentive to make that happen.
That's, that's good. Um, we're looking into.
Thought I came up with about a month ago, so I will bring it up. You brought it up the last, I think at one time.
Oh, I don't guess I didn't.
Told me about it last night.
Connect the swapping of the land, I guess I just didn't connect.
But if you get, if you get, so you don't have to do those studies, that would certainly. How far along are you?
I just wonder how long, like. It takes to to swap, right?
Yeah.
It would take one after Congress to do swaps.
Yeah.
Well, in a year, the congressional. Elections will be coming up, show every two years, they want, they might push it too fast and make sure they get reelected, help.
Well.
They're gonna have it done by this year.
Hopefully, this will.
Hopefully.
It's it's well underway.
Give them a federal, tell me, you never know.
Well underway, so I don't wanna. Put a longer process in front of a short process.
So is it, I I have a question with you about the master plan again.
Yeah.
If. When South Peak comes in with their master plan. Um. What is the process that that follows as far as? Public information.
It's a public, it's a public hearing.
It it it's a public hearing.
And a public comment.
But my point is, does it have to, does the planning board have to give approval? For the new master plan? And if so, does it? My comment is about a butter soup or people who currently live there now, so if they're gonna come in and change their master plan. To what they, their new vision, whatever it is. Should we be making sure that the people who have already purchased there know what those changes are? It it that, you know what I'm saying, is that?
I'm making a.
Do we have some sort of a public?
Are they all, all those are butters or people that don't have to notify?
Do they have to be notified?
But that is. And you only have to notify the head of the association to go. Not individual. Share with the Greeks in particular, you only have to notify the head of the president of the state. He's the most annoyed by all.
And because, I'm saying, those people that bought over there thought. Okay, there was gonna be a golf course, this, that, whatever that was gonna be now, maybe it's changed that. Or there was gonna be low density, now it's gonna be high density, however, that's gonna be changed, or it's gonna be a, a whole. Downtown area or whatever it's gonna be over there, so. To me, it would make sense to at least. Look, make them aware of it so they could come to the meeting, and if they have any concerns about the change of master plan as proposed. Because if if we look at it. And say, it it looks great. But if the people that are live over there and bought over there said. That's not what we bought into, it was, it was gonna be this. Then that. You know, how how does that work, cause?
But then you're not really changing what they have, they bought into. It's putting you on favor. For documentation. Next day, you're basically the concept.
But there's a, right, there's a big, there are big differences.
But I think what he's saying is, I bought a house, I think, I'm thinking I'm gonna look at green space or golf course, and now I'm looking at. A bunch of condos.
Or if you thought it was gonna be, and 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 my, my, the example that I thought about was the fireside, so fireside was originally on the old master plant. Supposed to be low density. That was individual house lots. Now it's now it's moved to. Forty one units, which is high density. So the people who bought. May have thought that that was only gonna be at six or eight house lots. So that's all you were gonna have for traffic or. Whatever, and now you're gonna have forty one. Times two cars each, so you could have eighty four cars coming in and going out, so. And I'm not saying it bothers me, I I just wanna make sure that they have. An ability to.
Okay.
Be notified and look at it, that's all I'm saying.
Who will we notify about the hearing? That we know, I mean, hey, but.
I I was not thinking about notifying, um, other than posting. So. What you're saying is you want me to notify, so here's the problem.
Well, I think the thing is, is it required that we notify?
I have no idea, I've never done.
Yeah, I don't know either, that's what I'm asking.
Think that's, I think that's really the question to ask.
Or maybe you wanna hear what the presentation is, see if it surprises to the level of what we wanna have a public hearing on. Then you can do the notice of public hearing. And.
Around we noticing.
So here's the problem also. Is that right now, all the war, members of the board of directors for the South Peak. H O A. Are Eric Bogosian and his employees.
But. If you. Right, we've already got an example of what's going on, cause we were notified about that by the homeowners that were there. There was, how many of those people wrote letters? There was a bunch that wrote letters, remember? So it's, right, so so. To me, I think that. Maybe Ca- Carol's right, and in some regard that we should. Wait until you have a final. Master plan pretty close to nailed down and then do the notification and let the general public come in, okay, Jane, if they can, if they. Through through that, through that meeting. They have their ability and a public forum to say to the planning board. We bought over there and we didn't think, you know. We don't want that. I I guess it's when you say that, at one, at one point. Do they, as homeowners, have the ability to say?
If there's a notification requirement, they should be notified before the twenty eighth, just like any other application that comes in, you don't notify them.
But you don't know, no, you 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 don't notify for conceptual, and to me, this.
This isn't conceptual, this is the hearing on the master plan, I believe.
Well, I don't know that it's a hearing, I think they're just gonna give her a presentation, we know nothing. I mean, we literally know nothing. I didn't know what they're gonna present.
And that was the other thing, should we have prior, so if we have. I'm gonna look at it and say. I'm hungry to talk about this tonight, because that's one of those things I do. We should have an edit time, so we could look at it, come up with some questions if we have.
We don't, we don't even know what's coming in the twenty eighth.
Then we don't, we're not gonna go. I I don't think. We comment on, OJ has made this. Comment a hundred times, that, you know what? If we don't have enough time to review it, we're just gonna look at it and say, hey, look, we'll take the information and then we'll review it and then we'll have a meeting. But.
I mean, I think we could ask like the question. So I mean, it's basically conceptual on the master, and we're having a twenty eight, not an actual hearing on the master plan.
Right, cause we don't have it. I mean.
Well, I think we inform it, that that that's, that is conceptual, that is thought, you know. So they don't think they're coming in and we're gonna approve.
We're gonna have to have another hearing then, I don't, you know, I think something can have without public, give it a public notice.
That's what I think.
But.
But I don't know if you have to, so.
I think you can have. More notice than required, you just can't have less notice than is required, so. You could directly to notify individually. Property owners and so.
How many homeowners are set?
A lot.
Yeah, okay.
I think they gotta be notified. I truly think they're gonna be notified.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be on the app.
And and does it make it, and I'm just throwing stuff off to you guys, but. Does it make? Is it a? Change of regional impact, in other words, if they were gonna put a main street over there with. Uh, hotels and restaurants and stuff. Would. The rest of the town wanna weigh in on it, say, you know, we don't want this, that, or the other thing, because of traffic or because of this. Or that, whatever reasons come up as a result of it, should it be? I mean, should there be a? It could affect a lot if they, I don't know, we don't know what they're changing, I've seen somewhere in writing about a main street or that, uh. What 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 would they call it?
Well, they wanna have a main street presence, welcomes.
So I don't, yeah, I. I've heard all sorts of rumors about what they wanna have over there, but I I, you know, without. Them saying that, you know, you don't know.
Go on the website, it's on there. And shops and.
I mean, it had. This would be a great conceptual, as long as they know it's conceptual for sure. It would give the board a chance to look at it, board of selection and the planning board, and we. But they gotta know that, look, that this is just conceptual, that we're just seeing this tonight. We haven't had any advanced notice of what it is, so we're gonna listen to it, your presentation is. Take, you know, you should bring information for us, we could take it and look at it. And then we're gonna have. We should, oh, inform them that we're gonna have a public notification process of some sort.
Okay.
I've never sat in on a master plan. Review, approval, or anything in my time here. So I guess my question is. Is there a formal application process? Do they, do they apply? Do do they?
The town has had a master plan.
When they came in.
Another town, a a master, a master. A development master plan. And we have our own master.
The planning board has had, um. I think, oh, does Forest Bridge had a master plan?
Yes, I, I, not since I've been on, so I've not sat to this practice.
Right, Forest Bridge is seven.
We did take, when they came in originally, we did take public comment and the board voted on the master plan. So I don't know, but I don't. Know who was notified, who wasn't notified. Who were, who were.
Yeah, yeah, and and when they were developing Forest Bridge, they had their master plan and. It it came before the planning board and people commented on.
Right, but they, they found out to. Notice in the newspaper, notice at the post office.
No, no, I can tell you that my parents. Old land, they got noticed of it.
Yeah, but notice or posted.
Notice.
Noticed.
Okay, but then now we're talking about who.
But.
Yeah.
But that was the major master, not regional one, for for any develop.
So basically. People that invited that parcel been notified.
My parents get notified when.
Yeah.
Forest Ridge. Came in and during their, their, uh. Master plan during all the parts of it, it was, uh, Rick, Richard Tesla was. Back there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, did they get notice of site plan review, or did they get notice, a a separate notice from the minister plan itself?
I believe it was all, it was all part of, and again.
Site plan review.
It it was all part of the review process to approve. So that was, they convinced that. Here's what we wanna do, here's our master plan. And the public had a chance to weigh in on. And to me, that.
Originally, if I may add into it. Then he came in, said that, this group came in. The Ford Ridge property. They all did one too, legislation, riverfront.
Yep.
And riverfront over here also. But anyway, Ford Ridge, they came in, they had to do a watch through on the site, all play boy went through it separately with them. Where they had cut. They made a different plan, but they had different zones, there will be adds on, implemented each zone as it gets developed. In other words, we have zone A, we don't, this is the house that they done. They start in the second. And the ownership, they want to control each zone. Which was sad, it was. Sad they controlled all property, there were so many units that sold, then the, oh, H O A would take over and he could start the next one.
That's the same they all are, yeah, it's same as over here, but I mean. This master plan was supposed to be recorded. And the registry deeds, and never was.
So, right, so we're gonna fix, we'll fix that this.
Right, but but that's the importance of how important it is, it actually gets registered under registry deed, so. It's a lot, it's a live document that's supposed to be led by and registered, so I think, you know, to me, it does. You should have all public. It should something be all transparent, open, so everybody knows, just.
Originally, we had a set of plans deep from the. Index.
Yeah, fancy binder and everything.
They find that, you know.
Yeah. I mean, there is a.
I will, we ask Cal, ask New Hampshire, Miss Association. Requirements for notification.
That'd be fine.
But why? Why wouldn't we ask the town attorney, because we're asking a specific legal question. As a, you know, as opposed to a general one, usually if I. Have a specific question like that, I mean.
I like.
The general question, well.
You said. Well, the attorney, you know, the town attorney knows Lincoln.
The Office of State Planning is the one you wanna go with.
Yeah, good, we need to go there.
The Office of State Planning is what, I would think, whatever better is the one.
The municipal association will give.
They wanna answer it.
But isn't that a general question? Are towns required to notify about this? I mean, a master plan, we haven't even have an, I don't wanna call it an application.
Or the change of, the the change of a master plan. Cause that's what this is.
They put a new master plan, basically, so it's not.
It's a change from what we have over there.
Right, I mean, density is not gonna change.
You don't know that.
It's not gonna wow.
You don't know that. They could put up. Two hotels on, and the rest of it could be just open space.
Okay, the number of units.
The number of units.
Yeah, the number of units won't change.
Right, the units won't change.
Really, they're supposed to be a big hotel, it's point of fact, like, you remember? There's a, the original map.
There was all sorts of stuff, if you look at that, there's supposed to be sidewalks, this and that. Someone don't like the condo like you. Some of them don't like the idea of condos.
Who's?
I don't know, forty one condos.
No. You know.
Yeah, the ones that. Sent the letter. And he wants to send that letter.
Oh, what's, letters from?
Yeah, yeah. They wanted to hold off on it because. They they were the ones that actually said. It's it's being pushed, it's being pushed through by Burgosian's family, cause it's all, they're all the ones that are on the board.
But they had, you know, they wanted us, use us as leverage, so they can negotiate a better deal with the developer, which that's. Really, that's not what we do.
But I can't blame them for saying.
You know, I understand they have, they might have a legitimate right, I don't know.
Probably know what they bought. But I think the way to do is keep it open and transparent and say. This is what we were, this is where we're headed.
Which which we are, but I also think that we have a responsibility to understand what what. Complaints are relevant to the planning board to to.
To answer, yeah.
And which totally, like, you know. They're afraid he might use the money to do something that he, that would be illegal.
That's not our problem.
It's not our problem, okay?
But if you're putting high density on low density, then that's, or if you don't have enough green space, and it's both, it that, but those.
I just didn't see any of those in the, in the complaints, I saw some, some wild accusations, we have no.
Oh, yeah, those are my questions, well, so we've got all, I don't know what they're.
That's my part, that I saw, I saw. Nothing that was really.
And he was related.
Relevant for us to consider as a land use planning board.
I don't think that they, a lot of them realized. That. That was. Supposed to be the low density, and it's now gonna be high density. I think if you told them that, if they knew that. I think they would be. Fired.
I think that would give them ammunition. But it didn't, they weren't aware of it, so it's not like they were upset about. But you go, oh, they shouldn't have done this.
Yeah, but the problem, the problem that stuff happens is when they, they see it, they go. And then they find out, they go, how come we weren't told about it, about it?
Well, they listened to the meetings, they know, cause it was stated in the meeting.
Right. That's, they haven't, they'd have to look at every meeting to. Out of, you know.
Yes, and sometimes they'll look it online, and sometimes they're. They try and find it sometimes. It's a lot easier.
The native of town get out of meeting. Well, these people that buy the land, it's, they would tell you that I built.
But here, the master plan was never intended to be a rigid document.
It's every document that pays.
Just, that's not true. Because if it gets registered over and. Registry deeds, it is. A registered document, which means it.
Well, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I asked a question about, oh, cause I want to, the notification, that's all.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna get an answer to that. All right, so we're going to get an answer to that.
Yeah. I agree with that thing.
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no. Okay. I, I, I just have a question, Joe, at this meeting, you stated. You agreed with, that there was not enough reason, you stated verbally, there weren't enough reasons to bring. This, the semi base log in for, for site plan review, and looking at the seating and the deck, and all these other things. And then you voted to bring them in, it seemed like you were confused, if you think they should come in.
Right, that's why I didn't care about it.
Okay, that's fine, as long as, as long as, it just seemed like there was some confusion there.
Right now, you, you need a lot of things to take care of the last weekend.
What happened last weekend?
I follow what I.
Well, it's time, I'm sorry to hear that, Joe. Sorry to hear that.
Well, probably a blessing, one way.
Hmm, how old was last?
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven.
Well, I said, you said you fell down a couple, five, six years ago, you had a brain injury.
It was ninety.
You're going down and down.
Okay.
Just on Susan.
Hello, Susan, say, be quiet, come home.
Okay.
We're going home, Susan.
I'm just saying, Dad was ninety.
Ninety?
Oh, ninety.
I can't direct it.
You could have got a whole load over your.
I'm just, I'm so sorry to hear that.
Susan, bye, darling.
Yeah.
One other, one other thing, thing about is we did talk about possibly putting a planning board member on the technical review committee. So I didn't know how, if everyone thought about that.
Um, I think that'd be a good idea.
What I mean, I think, you know. I, I, I think that could be, um.
That would be, I think, a problem, you have to make decisions.
You have to make decisions about a project, then know things about a project before it comes to the planning board at all. I think you would definitely cause whoever, whatever member that is, to have to recuse themselves when. When any of those projects come before the board, because they have preconceived notice. They may sit at that technical review committee and say, oh, I hate this project, it's stupid, and now, now they're going to come in here and try to be a fair minded person?
Exactly. Playboy don't provide a time to review committee. As long as you go.
There's different things you can and we can't.
I mean, a lot of it is just discussing, what do we need? Do we need a, this, or does he have enough square foot, you know, he.
I can tell you.
Permit ready, I mean. A lot of it is just.
We used to have conceptual review, and a conceptual review, we used to say. We used to have the planner, whoever it was. Talk to the fire chief, talk to the public works director, say, ask them what questions they have, and that's all it was. The engineer was something that, that the, the planning board. Did. And said, look, we, we need to get an engineer, and, and the engineer worked with the planning board. On that conceptual, at that, at that time. It's, it's kind of more than the, a whole other set of things, I mean. But. To me.
Well, the reason we have a team is we don't have enough staff to do all the work, and that, so everybody is helping. Each person is adding a little, helping in a little bit way. You know, Ryan's helping a little bit, Mike is helping a little bit, Lisa's helping a little bit, Cara, Corinne is helping a little bit, so we can get the work there.
Always had that?
Pardon?
Have you always had that, committee? Well, it's something new.
Well, it's not new. What, that was three or four years.
Oh, yeah, it's been that long.
It's just around pandemic time, I would think.
No, I think it was a little after.
Okay, maybe it was twenty.
I probably couldn't tell. I don't know.
It's, it's not new.
It's not. But I think it's only a couple of years old.
Okay. Want to put that on there? Is there a motion to adjourn? Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
All in, I do.
All in.
Are you still writing the world? They have nothing to do with.